It's September seventeenth. We call Frank County Commissioner meeting to order, please.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Chair Harris?
Present.
Vice Chair Metter?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Senate Plagued Leader.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment? Consent agenda is considered approval. Claim vouchers tax change orders nine hundred and seven thousand four hundred and forty and thirty-four cents. Considered approval of the commission meeting minutes September tenth. Consider approving the snowplow blades have equipped an amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's it. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Items of business, consider approval of twenty twenty-five adult year-end outcome report. Dustin?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First thing this morning is the approval of our fiscal year twenty-five adult year-end outcomes. We're required to present these, have them approved, then submit to KDOC every year. This was approved by our advisory board at their meeting last month, and I'll go over these briefly. Please feel free to interject if you have any questions or comments. We had three goals for our fiscal year twenty-five adult services. The first one was to improve the service delivery as far as motivational interviewing and evidence-based practices. All the action steps that we set out to accomplish last year, we did. One of the things that we did over the year was we wanted to take every monthly staff meeting and introduce or reinforce an evidence-based practice or motivational interviewing technique with the staff, just as a refresher every month. That worked well, but this year we're going to have a more formal system that was brought in from the state, and so it's going to be an hour-long thing before every staff meeting where we have some homework for staff to do beforehand. We go over the technique as a group, and then all the staff have homework to do afterwards with their supervisor. So this is going to be a much more formal process for using our evidence-based tools with our clients. So I think we're going to take what we did this past year and just bolster it even more in this coming year. The second goal that we had was to offer more cognitive behavioral programming during the year. We did have some turnover with our partnership with ELC and our care coordinator position there. What we did, instead of doing that through the second half of the year, was we tapped one of our intensive supervision officers to deliver programs just in-house. And so we started that in the last quarter of the year, and this year we're going to bolster that even more. So we met the goals that we set out to meet there, except we had some challenges there with that turnover. But with the programs ISO up and running, we were able to offer some groups in the last quarter of the year that were able to meet some of those goals. So the last thing that we set out to do was increase positive reinforcement in our clients. So we want to reinforce when our clients are doing well, doing the things they're supposed to do, and not depending on compliance or sanctions when they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. To that end, we looked at incentives and sanctions. So when our clients are doing well, we want to incentivize that. And so over the fiscal year, we issued three thousand seven hundred and sixteen incentives to our clients. We tracked that with some spreadsheets locally. We also found that we issued, pardon me, seven hundred and twenty sanctions for the year. That's a ratio of five point one six incentives to every sanction that we issued. The goal for the year was four to one, so we not only met that, but we exceeded it. In the previous fiscal year, we had more of a four-to-one ratio, and that was only in the last half of the year. So again, we took what we did in the previous year, and we improved upon it. So that five point one-six to one ratio was really encouraging. We hope that by offering more incentives to our clients, that will translate into more success. And I'll talk about success next.
Can you tell me what an SB one-two-three client is?
An SB one-twenty-three client, yeah. So one of the things that we had on the report was we found with our CINABO one-twenty-three clients, we incentivized them more, but we also sanctioned them more. CINABO one-twenty-three is those clients that are sentenced to us for our drug offense. So the non-SB one-twenty-three clients are non-drug offenders. So it seems like we treated them a little bit differently, and I think that's based on the nature of their offense and why they're with us. So because they have some addiction issues, we incentivized them more, but we're also sanctioning them more for that addictive behavior and trying to curb that. So, yep, of course. With the incentives, we want to kind of bolster that in this coming year, and one of the things that we're going to look at doing is offering more of a menu of what incentives we have for our clients, letting our clients pick some of the things that are more individualized and tailored to them. The evidence says that when you tailor the incentive to the client and what really means something to them, they get more out of the incentive. And so this year, not something we did this past year, but this year, we want to offer a menu where our clients can kind of pick and choose like what means something to them as an incentive. That was something that came from our advisory board meetings and talking with different stakeholders on things that might resonate with our clients. So for the fiscal year, we had a hundred and forty-four unique clients that terminated from supervision. There were a hundred and seventy-four cases for those clients, and a hundred and twenty-nine of those were successful. That's a success rate of seventy-four point one percent for the year, and those numbers are all really similar to the previous year, the number of clients, the number of cases, and the success rate. So the goal for the year is seventy-five percent, so we're just under that, but I think that we're doing some good work to try to look at that long-term and hopefully bring it above seventy-five percent in the next year or two and then going forward. So that were the, those are the adult outcomes for the year. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have on the report.
Any questions for Dustin?
Make a motion on this one before moving on to the next one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five adult year-end outcome report.
Okay.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Item two is consider the approval of the twenty-twenty-five juvenile. Dustin?
Thank you. Our goals for the juvenile side were pretty similar as far as juvenile supervision goes, and I'll start with that before I go on to intake. We do the same thing with our evidence-based practices in our monthly meetings, and we're doing the same more formal scenarios this coming year, but we met our goals for that first goal. Our second goal is to target interventions. Here, what we wanted to do was to prioritize our resources for our higher-risk clients through some targeted things as well. What we found was we had twenty-one terminations for the year, and those are our juvenile offenders as well. Ten of those were successful for a success rate of forty-eight percent. That's considerably lower than the adults that we just talked about. However, KDOC has different metrics for what is successful on the juvenile side, and that's usually much lower than the adult side. In fiscal year twenty-four, we had considerably fewer terminations. We had thirteen, and the success rate that year was fifty-four percent. So quite a bit lower on both the terminations, but also the success rate dropped a little bit this year. There could be some reasons for that. One of the things that we're going to look at too down the road is our tracking of incentives and sanctions. Our breakdowns of why those youths were not successful were about the same as last year as well. Some of those were due to picking up new offenses. Some were due to not completing the recommended treatment options that they were ordered or recommended to complete. So the last one was that increased positive reinforcement like the adult side. What we found this year was that we issued seventy-eight incentives to our juvenile clients, and we issued thirty-three sanctions. That's a ratio of two point three-six incentives to every sanction. So that's lower than the adult side, and I think what we found was we were tracking those a little differently. We use a different spreadsheet and a different database to track that. What we found in doing so was that we didn't have incentives and sanctions that might have been issued in the same meeting, and so it was either all or none. It was either an incentive or a sanction for that client contact. So that skewed the data, and I think that going forward, we'll track that a little differently because we really feel like there were probably some incentives issued along with sanctions, which is what we want to do. When we sanction somebody and say, you didn't do this so well, we also want to say, but you did this, this, and this well. So just, we didn't track that quite like we needed to. So I'll pause there if there's any questions on juvenile supervision and our outcomes.
Any questions?
The other part of our juvenile operations is juvenile intake and assessment. We had some different goals for that this year. Well, most to engage our support in our communities, and that is basically training our law enforcement partners. So Ken Halliburton in our office, he conducts training with law enforcement officers, both new ones and seasoned ones, to make sure that they're up to date on intake practices when officers arrest a juvenile or bring them to juvenile intake. We want to make sure that they know what our process is and why we're doing what we do. So we do that throughout the year. We completed all the goals for that. We also wanted to set out to measure our processes and practices in intake and just make sure that we're doing all that we can through the juvenile intake process to make sure we're screening these kids and to try to meet those needs early on when we can. All the goals and action steps that we set out to meet there, we completed for the year. And then the last one was to provide measurement feedback. So we wanted to look at what trends, what practices we were doing throughout the year, and then to give feedback to our staff on those practices. And we didn't, we completed all those goals and action steps as well. So that's our juvenile intake and assessment, and that would wrap up all of our juvenile outcomes for the year.
Would you say your numbers of juvenile intakes are, they stay pretty consistent, or are they going up, down yearly?
From fiscal year twenty-four, the prior year, to fiscal year twenty-five, that went down considerably. Our fiscal year twenty-four numbers were around a hundred and ninety for the year, and that's over the four counties that we supervise. And in fiscal year twenty-five, I think it was a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-eight, somewhere there. So it dropped precipitously. Well... That may be a good thing. It may also not be a good thing. We wonder too if juveniles are not being picked up, if juveniles are not being held accountable, that's the way, the way they should be. This will all go back to the juvenile justice reform that the state passed back in twenty sixteen, and there's a lot of, a lot of sentiment out in the, in the community on juveniles aren't getting the services that they need, they're not being held accountable through probation, for example. And so I'm not saying this is necessarily anyone's mindset in particular, but the thought might be that, why even hold them accountable? Why even arrest them if they're not going to be really held accountable through the justice system? And so I've heard that a time or two. I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case with our numbers dropping like they did, but it's out there.
And I also wondered about that. When you, when you don't have the success rate with juveniles as you do with the adults is because, what are you going to do with them? You know, what can you tell them that it's going to happen, and so it's harder to get them to?
Our job in community supervision is mainly behavior change. We will hold people accountable when we need to, but honestly, what we want to do is change that criminal behavior and make it more positive behavior, right? With our adult clients, we often have two or three years to do that. So it's a lot of work, you know, month in, a month out, week in, a week out, to change those behaviors. With our juvenile clients, thanks to that reform, we've got six months, maybe nine months. That's not a lot of time to take an adolescent and change some behaviors from what they were doing criminally to change those, making them positive.
Especially if they're in the same environment.
Correct.
Right. Thank you. All right.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five juvenile year-end outcomes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yep.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Third item, consider approval of repairs to sixty-one ten M John Deere tractor. Jeff?
Morning, Rod. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, this is a situation where we have a, it's a two thousand and nineteen sixty-one ten M John Deere. We have a boomover attachment to it, has a cab on it. I believe it has less than three thousand hours. No longer under warranty. It has a transmission issue. We've had it looked at several times. It's really more than we want to try to bite off in-house to do. Kirk has reached out for me and got some numbers on it. It cost us twenty-four thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents to have that tractor split and repaired. This is something that we, since we don't have access to a bucket truck at this moment, this is something that we do utilize quite frequently for vegetation control, long roadways, and something that we would really benefit from if we could keep it going. So I can answer any questions that you have on it. I did reach out with, to Derek and Janet, and we looked at the budget on what we have for repairs. I know last year, we went way over on shop repairs, but I really do think we can fit this in our budget at the time. It's a lot of money, but we do have the funding to do such.
Yeah, I think that in terms of money, where we need to watch ourselves, particularly for the rest of this year, is all of these projects. But this is equipment and maintenance repairs, and we feel comfortable with where we're at in that line, so.
It's pretty volaried machines, so it'd be nice to get it up and go on before you have something to use.
It is, and we could benefit by using, Paul Slitter, who does an outstanding job for us, runs a boomover year-round, and he has for years and does a great job, but you just can't keep up with one, one employee doing it. So we have some guys now that are capable of also assisting in this. It would really help us going into, into the winter months if we had two machines.
Is there a motion?
Motion to reapprove?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Forest neighborhood revitalization properties, Janet?
Commissioners, you have before you the neighborhood revitalization properties that have been presented by the city of Ottawa. They've already been reviewed by the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, which is comprised of one county, one city, one school district, employee. And so these projects meet all the criteria on paper. So basically, what you are approving, as always, is to allow these properties to enter the program once they have completed their project and met the final review, including the minimum amount of increase to enter the program. So you have the properties there before you, and I'd answer any questions if you had them.
I have a question. Ten twenty-one West Fourth.
Okay.
Building the garage. Unless the map has changed, it is not in the green on the map.
Okay.
So...
Think the map's changed.
I think the map changed.
And I don't know. This is like a two thousand and nineteen one. That was the only one I could find. But that's like an area that like, I thought this would be like in bad neighborhoods.
Did you, what address, eight?
Ten twenty-one West Fourth. If the house is right behind like the water treatment plant.
It looks like the new version.
So like, this is that road, and it's just a garage adding on, I mean, like, if I built a garage, I would want a tax rebate.
Right. Again, it has to meet the, the increase to the, the overall increase to the property for that program.
Everybody builds an extra garage?
I'd say it's not likely he'll make it because you have to increase the fifteen percent value.
I think so.
And the garage on a residential property, especially one that's worth that much to begin with, he probably won't get there.
Okay. Because usually they try to like, show like, this is the amount that it's going to cost, and this...
No, they'll show how much it costs.
He's rolling the dice.
Okay, well, that's what I wondered, if it was like, well, hey, I'm building this garage, maybe I can do it, but...
I do know that we've had several other garages that do meet the criteria, so, I mean, like, we had one up on West Wilson that they bought, built a very large garage, attached it to their house, like, we had one over on Ash Street that they built it to match an older home, you know, and, and, you know, the character of the neighborhood. And so, yeah, it very much increased the value.
But my, my main thought was if this is current, it's not in that green area.
Yeah, I could definitely have Andrew, our GIS person, look at the maps and, and look at it against the legal description and see if it is in that area.
That was my thought. So I was like, that's really not, I guess what I'm picturing in my mind of the neighborhoods that a lot of this is in, I'm like, that doesn't really fit that criteria.
The neighborhood revitalization project area was updated, and it does include most of Ottawa except for newer neighbors, neighborhoods like Westwood.
And this isn't, I would call a newer, I mean, it was built like when I was in high school, but...
Yeah.
It's still newer than like, but so was Pinocchio Estates, and I don't think...
It looks like the new map.
Okay.
So that would be my main thing.
So why don't we approve the packet with the exception of ten twenty-one West Fourth? You do your due diligence, and if it's fine, we can pop it on the consent agenda for next week?
Okay.
You fine with that? If there are no other questions on the other properties.
I guess the only thing I would like to say is I'd like to see this more of a graduated, like the business, like this incentive program, like how the commercial aspect is where it graduates how much they get over that ten years instead of ninety-five percent, but that's a different discussion for a different day.
So, so, set up on five.
Yeah, and that's if, I think...
Remodels.
Yeah, it's a remodel. The ten-year ones are the ones...
The remodel, yeah, the remodels are all five, and the...
Kind of like the commercial properties.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that definitely, it could be something that you guys discussed with the city of Ottawa about making changes to their program. I have heard that there are some other proposed updates, so if that's something you guys want to take a look at, you know, we might want to reach out to the city of Ottawa and let them know that we're interested in looking at some changes on it.
About every time that they approve them at the city level, there's grumblings about, well, maybe we need to change this, maybe not quite so much or not so many years or, and then it doesn't get done, and then until the next time, and then there's grumblings again, so...
I will tell you, it is a challenge from the rebate standpoint because they are so long now. So the customers who originally purchased the new house don't live in it for ten years, so they don't get the full rebate amount, and it does transfer to the new owner. So they are wanting to get that rebate, and they're wanting us to, you know, prorate that or something. And Jody did do that for a couple of years, our previous treasurer, but we ran into some situations this year, and so Marilyn decided we weren't going to do that anymore, which it does not state in the program that we have to do that. We had just agreed to do that. So again, because of the ten-year term, we are kind of running into some, some issues with the taxpayers.
Well, too, like on that garage, so that'd be a five, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it'd be a five.
Regardless, you don't...
How did it pick up in the ten? It was, maybe it was in the five, Marilyn, I guess.
So when you, you're getting a discount on the...
Yeah, it is on the five.
The improvement, so just for round numbers, say you paid, I don't know, a thousand dollars in tax. When you built the garage, okay, year or two, you're paying eleven hundred in tax, right? So that's simple math. It's, you know, probably eleven hundred that, that it added. But going forward, you don't know how much the value of the home versus the value of the garage. So it's basically a five-year tax freeze.
Yeah.
So you pay a thousand dollars for every year for five or ten, whatever the term is, because you are in the program, and that may very well be more valuable than the garage you added, just having your taxes frozen for a period of time. But there's always going to be a squeeze for the juice. I don't know. I mean, it's also a successful program that gets people to build houses places I never thought you'd build a house.
Well, that's why I don't think it should be, you know, gotten rid of. It's just...
It's not just the house you build, too. I mean, you look at the pictures of what they're getting rid of.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Just the fact that you're removing some of these old structures alone makes the ones around them worth more money, so.
Well, and if you build the new house, it improves the neighborhood, too, because the neighbors are like, oh, well, look, they just built a new house, I better do something to my house. So, yeah, it does improve the neighborhoods.
Sure. And you can measure the value of the new structure, but you can't measure the value of the improvement to not living next to a, you know, real detriment, so.
Yep.
There are motion.
I guess...
Hold one property.
If that's what the five of you want, we can keep it in as far as I'm concerned, but if we want to verify...
My main thing is, since if this is the current map, it's not on, it's not in the green on the map.
I mean, we can keep it in there because if it's not in the neighborhood revitalization area, then it wouldn't meet the criteria of the program, and it wouldn't be able to be admitted, so...
I would say, go ahead, and let's just do it and let them figure it out, whether it's on there.
I just didn't know whose process that was.
I do think it needs checked out. I think she's probably on to something, so. But I make a motion to approve the neighborhood revitalization properties.
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Discuss and consider move forward with the storm siren. Maybe it's an upgrade on...
Good morning.
Morning.
This has been a pet project of mine for many, many years. I've applied for hazard mitigation grant funds for I don't know how long, and low and behold, I got selected. So, and I've kind of been going through the process, and I'm a good stopping point now to come back to you guys and say, do we want to proceed? Little background on our siren system is, it's a, currently, it's analog VHF. That's how we set them off. Dispatch hits a little button, and it sends out a signal, and they go off. This will move that system to a, if the sirens are capable, to a two-way system, so I can test them at any point in time, and they will tell me that they're going off. That's important because we have failures or something like that, we don't necessarily know it. We've had sirens that have not gone off for months at a time before somebody said, you know, that Monday test, I haven't heard that siren in about a month. And then we sent somebody out, and sure enough, the siren wasn't working. And it's, it's the city's responsibility to take care of them, but I'm the one, normally the one that gets the phone call, and we kind of go out and investigate why that's happening, and then we call out the company to do that. So it's a, it's a huge, it's a huge upgrade for it. A little about the system, I actually kind of, I looked at what Federal Signal had, and I actually saw that they could go to this LTE cellular, cellular activation method, and nobody else in the state has done it yet. And so I've been working on it, try to get it done, try to get it done, and then Douglas County stole my Thunder, and they did it before I did, which is great because they've got all the bugs worked out of it, so I can kind of sweep in and be like, hey, thanks, guys. But the whole point of the system is after, after the first year, and this is where I don't know how long it's going to take, and that's where we're kind of, I'm at that point. So there's a lot of paperwork and stuff like that that's got to get done, at a point that if we want to proceed forward, I will push forward, and we will try to get it done. We've been selected, we're trying to get FEMA to approve it. The state's not going to select our project unless they have a very good chance that we're going to get approved. Don't know what that timeline is, working with the federal government, trying to get stuff back, so I don't know. Ongoing maintenance is about a hundred and eight dollars a siren, and since I don't know when we'll get approved and when we can get it perfected, I want to be able to bill the cities back that hundred and eight dollars, but I, basically, the first year, I would just put that on us and then put them in a budgeting process after that, so that gives them the opportunity to say, hey, we need a budget of a hundred and eight dollars per siren for some cities. For some cities like Lane and Richmond, that's just a hundred and eight dollars, for Pomona, uh, they have five sirens, but I would say that they would only want to put three on. But that's, that's going to be on them, not on me. Um, so that's just kind of where I'm at in this whole process that I'm, I was like, we're, we're there, we've been selected, we've been approved. Uh, if we don't want to move forward, now's a good time to say, tell the state that, hey, we're not interested. Um, but there's a whole lot of paperwork and stuff that's got to go before, and I was like, before we put a whole bunch of time and, and try to figure out, I got to drive around and take four pictures of every site, and, and it's, it's crazy, so I leave that to you guys to make. So you guys have any questions or?
You talk to the cities about the maintenance, I mean, it's pretty minimal, but.
I have, I have not talked to them about the maintenance, but it's, it is, it is minimal. The City of Ottawa, and then the City of Ottawa is not included in this because the City of Ottawa has gone ahead and done their own. So they've gone, they're, they've got the upgrades scheduled to take place, uh, October, November, so they're already moving forward to that, to that, the standard. Um, I've kind of warned them and I've, and I've told them ti- time and time again that VHF will be going away at some point in time. Um, I just, I haven't gotten into this where we can actually move forward.
Do they decide to turn their own sirens on? Like, usually you're the, I thought.
Do they hit their own button?
Yes, I guess that's.
Some sirens have a button, the, they have a lock box on it, they can a- activate their own siren. Um, some do not, some just require, just rely on us. A- anymore, and some of those sirens are really, really old, so there's a Thunderbolt in Lane, and I've been on them to, and we kind of dragged them along to get them to put, put in for a grant. Uh, Williamsburg for the longest time, they just got their siren replaced, so they got a brand-new siren out in Williamsburg. Rantool had a problem with their siren a couple of years ago, and they got a fairly new one out there in Rantool. Um, Richmond's, they just replaced their pole on their old one. Cause that's, and that sucker's old too, but they put a new pole on it, so.
So, uh, how many? What cities and how many, uh, the quote, I was having a hard time.
Fourteen sirens. It's fourteen.
And I guess if we agree to this and stuff doesn't go through, then we're not.
We're not, I think, and I'm not asking you to spend any money today. And that's the thing, I will come back to you guys and I just, I just, these are my, this is the quote that I got from Blue Valley Public Safety, I'm not asking you to spend any money today. I'm asking you for us, let's, let's, if we're going to go forward, let's go forward, if we're not, we're not, but I want you to just understand that if we go forward, we start pushing forward, this is what my current quote is.
Getting money out of the federal government is a arduous process, and before having Tom embark on that journey, I wanted blessing from the five of you. We believe we've been selected, that we've got a real good chance, but if y'all don't want it, then I'm not going to have him spend the time.
The, the, the people that have re- replaced their sirens, we're still using those sirens, all we're doing is the activation of them.
Alls we're doing is the activation portion of that, we just go in and there's a little box, and we'll take one box out, put a little new box in there. So.
In layman's terms, and if you've said this, forgive me, but in layman's terms, what's the benefit of this upgrade? Like what efficiency, what enhanced safety, what does it offer?
I will tell you that if we know that we're going to have a bad storm day, that being able to pull the sirens and find out, and especially on the two-way side, to be able to pull a siren and say that they're all operational is great. What's even better than that is being able to pull a, pull a siren and s- find out that it's not working. Because now I can make a plan to tell, uh, the sheriff's office or get a hold of that fire department saying, hey, your siren's not working. If something goes bad, you guys are going to be in the streets with sirens telling people they cover. Um, it's being able to come up with a backup plan to, to what we have.
Is that able to detect that without having it actually go off?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they have, they have some, uh, what they call a silent test, which is great, because I can, we can do that on the day of, and we can test that, make sure that's all operational.
So you're finding out that they work, they don't work before the event instead of after the event, and that's huge if it's a bad event.
Yep.
What's the life of this, this other system, been a long time, i- is there a a life like a software, is it software-based, is it, you know?
It's har, it's hardware-based and it's on cellular, so I would say as long as, and we're going to, hopefully we're going to be putting that 5G in, so it'll be as long as that system is, is available, I would say.
What happens if the tower gets hit by bolts of lightning?
Then, I will get it, then what I'll get is I'll get a no, and hopefully the cities will have that ta, that tower is insured, and they'll, they can get it replaced.
Okay.
Again, this is, this is, I, if the cities want to add sirens or to subtract sirens or something like that, that's fine, we're just a, we're just responsible for the activation of them. And that happened back in, uh, two thousand and seven. So I'm, I'm, however they want to run their cities is, is up to them, and there's, and there's sirens, because I get calls every time, so, all the time going, hey, well, it's not working, and I'm supposed to call you, no. I can give you a, I can give you a number for a person to call, but that's, that, that's going to be on them to maintain their siren however they want it to look.
Sounds to me like a good step for safety.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, yeah, my only concern is making sure we don't have, uh, ten more years to replace the equipment or something, and then where's that come from?
Well, this is a pa, project of yours, and if we can get the government to pay three quarters of it, then I would make a motion to proceed with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Process to upgrade the siren activation system in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Commissioner Waymeyer?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Metter? Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff report.
Nothing today, Rod, thank you.
Dustin, you have any more?
Derek? Just two, uh, quick updates. Um, last week I participated in a, uh, in a fentanyl roundtable with, uh, for law enforcement, that Charisse Davids who put together here in our district. And, um, so hearing the trends and knowing that we're, we're kind of right on, on the trends, we're also a little bit, we're, we're faring a little better than, than some of the other counties and agencies around us. Um, and then this weekend, um, I participated in the, a border school, I got back early this morning from our south, uh, from our southern border. Um, that was funded, um, not by our tax dollars, so the school, the hotel, travel, all that was, was, um, funded other ways. What I took away from that was some of the trends that we are seeing here are old trends down there, so when they, we go, we can go down there, find out what the current trends are, what's going on, and we can anticipate what we're going to be seeing here. Um, some of that in the, in, in the drugs that are coming across, the, the manner, um, in which they're concealed, um, and the form of those drugs is the big thing. Um, we're not seeing as many fentanyl pills, but we're seeing, seeing more powder, um, and that's consistent with, with what they've got down there, so we got to hear some. See how they're concealing it, how they're doing their transports, so that there's a way for us to start looking for those things. Um, there were some also other, um, things that they, we found out as far as tactics that are being used, uh, by the trafficking organizations that were concerning. Um, and, uh, but it's good for us to know that and to find out how they are, those things are being countered um, down at the border and down in South Texas, so that we can be prepared, so if those do start, those trends are going to come here. Um, if, if you remember, I went down there three years ago, one of the trends was, hey, these guys are not, they're no longer just pulling over and giving up the load, they're shooting at people, and then not long after that, we had some people shooting at us, trying to get away, um, with, with their drugs. So we do see those things coming, and that's beneficial for us to know, um, so that we can plan ahead and kind of see what's going, and then find out what we can do to combat that, so I just wanted to update you guys on, on that. We've gone through some pretty good training within our, within our agency based on the trainings and, and the, um, briefings that we send all of our people to, so I think that we are, um, as an agency, sitting in a pretty good place, we've got some very good trainers in our organization that are, that keep us up to date and, uh, keep us ahead of the game, so we're, um, I, I, I'm, I'm proud of our people and the, the job they do, I think. Think because of that, we're sitting in a good spot, so that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good morning again, I just got a few things. Um, Denny Brown did complete the, uh, crack seal work up on, uh, Montana. Uh, Shawnee, I spoke to you guys last week about needing one more pallet to complete it, that did get us to the point where it was done, he did discount that, so it was, we had about a four-thousand-dollar overrun uh, to complete it, but it, it looks good, if you get a chance to drive it, I'd recommend you get up, and it, it did definitely help. Um, our, our staff has completed all the work that we're going to do on Tennessee. Uh, uh, so we'll be sending that lay-down machine back that we had re, that we had rented. Uh, I'm real happy with Justin and his guys and how that came out, so I appreciate the work there. We still have the, uh, crossroad tube and a couple of, of aprons that we need to do for Dan Barrow at the, uh, up on the hill, then we're just kind of at the mercy of kilo at this point to get that done, so hopefully we can get it done this year before the weather changes on us. Uh, one thing that I wanted to, to bring up, uh, about a month ago, Derek and, uh, Brandon had reached out to me, and I, I think I've spoke to a few of your commissioners about the possibility of a, of a seal coat in our parking lot. Um, I had received some, um, I guess some quote, quotes that Colt had helped me with. Uh, I've got three of them today, um, that are substantially lower than what we had previously. I know, uh, this is a time-sensitive thing, if you're going to try to do it this year, because we're getting kind of late with the, the temperatures. Uh, I, I would tell you, I also reached out while we had Denny here, and I asked him to give us a bid, and he came down and didn't seem to think that, uh, uh, he wanted to, uh, to bid on it, basically because he didn't think that it was, uh, something that we, we can get much benefit out of. He was concerned about it being a chip seal lot and it dirty and not, the chips not sticking and taking more than he wanted to do. But I did reach out to these other three, uh, the low bid, um, for that was an outfit called Smart Pricing. Um, Slurry Coat, and they're out of Kansas City. Uh, just for the Slurry Coat itself, it would be twenty thousand dollars on the mark. If we want them to, uh, repaint those lines, that would be another two thousand, two hundred. So that would be twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars if they, if you went with them. Uh, we had another one that was through Garmin, uh, it was just slightly higher, and it included paint as well, but it was twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the last one would have been that Nick Seal coating, which we initially got through Brandon, and it was almost forty thousand, so, um.
Did they all clean, cleaned it, brimmed it back in?
Yeah, that wa, that was everything on, on the, the two that were the lowers, that's, that's what it indicates that they would do.
Any difference in the product, or?
I, I can't tell you that, I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with either one of them and what they're using, it's just the bid that they submitted to us. So I guess I'm just, whatever you want me to do with this, here it is.
Does there are reviews on the companies, see who's a better company, I don't know, you know, that's kind of a, it's not like which is the best restaurant to eat at, you know?
Well, I do have some concerns that a contractor came in here and said he wasn't willing to do it because he didn't think he could provide the ser, you know, the service that we need for that expense, that says a lot.
Does he slurry seal or fog coat also, or does he just crack seal with the?
He does, he does a slurry, slurry seal as well. We, we actually reached out to Coffey County and spoke with them about the possibility of doing a fog seal. And in fact, we actually went down, a few of our guys went down this week and, and watched them do it. It would be cheaper, it would, they, they, they claim that they get about another year out of it on their chip seal. They do it themselves, but again, they don't have time for a parking lot, um.
But they see value in it.
They, they do, they think it gets about a year extra, they try to do a rotation down there every five years on their, on their asphalt, they put their own asphalt, I'm sorry, on their chip seal, they put their own chip seal down, and they think that gives them, on asphalt, at least a year, maybe two in some locations. And that was, that's a fog seal. Yeah, when you put it down, it's, you got to keep everybody off of it for several hours, it's kind of a brown color, and then it turns to almost a black, it looks almost like.
Turns once it's cured, yeah.
Hard part is trying to keep people off of it for that extended period of time.
Everything, I heard it's good for small, small cracks, it's a maintenance thing, I mean, it'll look great when it's done, but it, uh, like hydrates it, it, like putting lotion on your skin in one way, it just keeps that, that asphalt from drying, cracking out, helps with the small cracks, it doesn't do big, bigger cracks.
And again, I, I would have preferred to put this in front of you next week when Derek and I had a chance to talk about it, but I know it is time-sensitive and, and both of the, two of the people that emailed me or contacted me were concerned about getting late in the year and the weather conditions and temperatures, and that has affected.
Come from the ANX fund, what's that fund look like?
I wouldn't recommend that it come from the ANX fund, just because, um, we've been, you know, we have the bonds that pay out of there, so, um, it's kind of self-sufficient right now, but it's not really gaining, not really losing, but it doesn't have a significant balance in there, so I would recommend if, if you guys, if it's something you want to do, that we take this out of general reserves.
Think if you got back with it, they could get right on the ten?
I think that's what they anticipate doing.
I mean, we got a little tempted for yet, so.
That's what my concern was, is if they're not going to get to it in time, and then it, they do it on it, you know?
Well, it probably would have to be done on a Sunday, and we'd have to keep all the traffic out, it, it, we'd have to have everything out of the parking lot when they did it.
Is that something, how do you, I mean, I guess we are the ones that get to decide, but your feelings of it, like, should this wait until next year, or, I mean, I don't know if over the winter with freezing thaw, if it's, I'm not looking at.
I, I looked at the parking lot a few weeks ago, it has massive cracks in it, we have done a, we have done a crack seal appears in part of it, there's a lot more on there now, you don't have anything that's breaking apart or crumbling at this point. Um, it, to be honest, it probably looks better than Fifteenth Street, and that's not a
Yeah.
fault of theirs, but, um, I, I, I think it would possibly get you another year down the road before you decide what you want to do. But I don't know that it necessarily rises to the level right now that you ha, would have to make that determination.
I guess my thought on it was that there are a lot of cracks showing through, but no, we're not losing chunks and
Right.
anything we're going to have to do, it's going to be quite a bit expensive if you're talking about an overlay or
Correct.
even another slurry seal, it's getting pretty high, eventually you're going to have to mill it down to, to get it to, keep it flowing and not get higher than the sidewalks and things like that, so.
It's, it's.
I think it's the cheapest time you can buy, the best value as far as that.
It's, it's realistically kicking a can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so is all pavement maintenance.
You're absolutely right, it is.
I mean, you're buying time with everything you do, buying years.
I'm just going to hear.
You got anything further?
No, um, I mean, I, this kind of just popped out of nowhere, and I've, I don't like that we don't know the vendors that are going to do it, but every vendor we use, we didn't know them at one point in time, so I think that's, I, I really don't, Rod, this is so far beyond my scope of expertise that I think just generally speaking, has nothing to do with this project, but it's just being cognizant of how many of these things we continue to do, like, and just wherewithal of the overall budget is the, probably my bigger. But we have the ability and our general reserves to do it. Um, you know, if, if you guys think that this is the most efficient option and that this is going to get us down the road and, and be the best decision, I certainly have no, I don't have the expertise to refute that, so.
And I think, I mean, my initial thought is filling in some of those smaller cracks, and just, even though it's not like it's a Band-Aid, but it, filling them in, if winter, we have one of them really wet, freezy kind of winters where, then it's going to start.
It's a good base, yeah. Do you know if that's a spray or, or a squeegee?
Just slurry, I believe, I think it's a, I think they put it down probably with a distributor.
A little questionable when they was talking about being thick seal, because it leaves more voids.
My, my biggest concern is the fact that we had a contractor in here that didn't want to do it because he didn't feel he could do us an adequate situation, and that's somebody that did a good job for us. Uh, these other guys are just folks that we've pulled out of thin air.
That crack seal was also a project, initially we were hesitant because we didn't know if it would be of value, right?
Correct.
So we found out we have another tool that is of value and ended up being a good call.
Right.
I think anything we could potentially do to this lot, for, right now, it, it's the answer we want, it's a fair surface, but we know that it's towards the end of that. I think anything else we could potentially do to it would be far more expensive.
I, I think.
This is be the cheapest way to find out if it's, do you have another tool in our toolbox that we could use for the right situation?
I think the key to this one, Colt, is to make sure that, that we get this parking lot as. I think the key to this one, Colt, is to make sure that, that we get this parking lot as, or the contractor gets it as clean as possible as a chip seal surface. With all the cracks and all the things that are debris, my concern is, is how well it's going to stick. And, and I think that was, that was also Denny's concern.
We're not talking about, and I mean, make no mistake, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. But we're not talking about enough money here that I, I think, Colt, as you said, it, 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 to the extent it's a bit exploratory, that could be a good thing. And Rod, you mentioned a facelift. If nothing else, the parking lot's going to look fantastic. It's going to give us good, I mean, this is one of our big public access points. So having a, a brand new looking lot with freshly painted lines. Um, we know where our reserve fund is at, like that, that, no, no pressure on it at all. Like I, I can support this. Um, I, I, again, I don't want to keep hammering it, but I think it's just being cognizant of the totality of these expenditures, but certainly we can comfortably do this.
And I would think, I would let Jeff pick if the two weren't really that far apart in price. I would pick who you felt more, like if you were to go back and call them, like who sounds like they're going to clean it the best? And who's going to?
I, I can research that for you, but again, I, I don't have any, I don't, I don't have any, I've never worked with those folks. That's not, like, like Colt says, not a bad thing, I just don't know anything about them. So I can, I can try to do.
I mean, that would be my thing is kind of.
Judgment.
You felt who was better, I mean, not necessarily if the.
Well, you don't know on timing too and schedule of the building when it's busy. So again, giving you some leeway to approve a, a spending limit on the higher one. And then you can have some tools. If one of them say, no, it's Monday at noon, no matter what, well, that's not going to work.
Why, why don't you, just because it's a round number, if you're okay with it, give us authority to spend up to twenty-five thousand. That will cover the two lower bids and any small, like if there's, if we emphasize cleaning it and they say, well, then maybe that gives us a little cushion.
But there's some areas you want them to crack seal with hot tar or something like that, that's an option, yeah.
Okay.
I can do that.
All right.
Yeah, the motion would be to a, to authorize the county administrator and staff to spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars on, uh, I'll call it refinishing the annex parking lot.
Make a motion to that extent?
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
After the car show, tells them not this weekend.
After the car show weekend. That's all I have, Rod.
Staff report.
Well, of course, we had our budget hearing, so I didn't attend anything else. But I did re- pick up on the thing, probably Janitor or somebody could answer this question. Uh, upcoming changes to the state law under House Bill twenty-two thirty-one. Nothing that, that beginning in twenty twenty-six, a wide range of personal used vehicles and equipment, including ATVs, golf carts, off-road motorcycles, trailers, uh, watercraft through the fifteen thousand pounds will no longer be subject to property tax. I didn't know what dollar amount that even meant. I don't have a clue, maybe you guys do to, how many dollars are we talking about?
I don't know what that number is. Um, I, we were, I, I was at a training yesterday and where we um, went over a lot of that. And so I haven't looked at our new numbers. They had our twenty-four numbers and I just really didn't pay attention to them because they were old numbers. So I can definitely um, bring those numbers back to you.
Yeah, I didn't know if it meant a big, huge number or, you know, when they pass us these things, you know? It's just another thing.
Well, even if it's a small number to, to us.
Are we talking a couple thousand or are we talking twenty thousand, you know?
Even when it's a small number, uh, as far as the budget, doesn't affect us. Unfortunately, the appraiser still has to go capture the valuable things that aren't taxed, which is a huge waste of time. You know, there's equipment exemptions and, and, and things like that for businesses. We still have to fill out a deal so they can determine the value to not tax you.
Wait on it.
So, so the um, the training I was at was with a property valuation um, for all the certifications that I have to do in November to them for all of our values, our tax, our levy, all of that. Um, and they said that they are not removing that stuff from our reporting information because they're not sure yet whether this is going to be successful since the state made this determination for the counties, for the cities, you know, taking away value from all of them. Um, they didn't know if this would be something that stuck or this would be something they did for a few years and then ended up taxing these things again. So they said for the time being, they're not removing them from our reports, just um, to see where it goes. So I will look and see what, what value that is for us.
Kind of dollars are, what are we talking about?
I don't know what that number is.
I fill out a deal saying how much my ladders are worth scaffolding.
Oh, yeah.
Pay on them because it's a deal to use to do business.
Do they still do that with ladders?
I think so, yeah.
I know, that's true. Thorax, we're, we're in the, pardon, several years ago, when he had a brand new trailer, enclosed trailer. And they come up and they, you know, registered it and all, you know? And says, well, what do you haul? He said, well, different material, my ladders. Oh, you have ladders in there, so like.
Don't tax them, you don't pay tax because it's for business, but you use it to work, yeah.
Goodness.
That's all I can.
I went to the Chamber Coffee that was at the Old Depot Museum to, I guess, showcase their display about the Zellner Building that used to be at Second and Main. Um, the historical society also talked about some events that they're going to have and they're starting, they're doing some walking tours of Ottawa, um, like downtown to kind of explain the buildings and the history of everything, it was pretty good. And if I heard her correct, I got to see Colt's handiwork in there. So he built a neat thing to display the big metal rods that used to hold the buildings together. So they, other than it didn't really work in that one because it still fell over, but um, it was pretty cool, so.
The display didn't, the building fell over.
The big metal rods did not do a very, like, your display was holding nice and sturdy.
It was some ambiguity there.
I meant like, they didn't do well in the original building. Yours was doing well, maybe if you had built the original building, this is before your time, so it wouldn't have fallen. Anyways, good stuff.
The only thing I was at was at the, the budget meeting. It was nice to see a full room. You know, sometimes we are here, we don't see a lot of the public. And you sometimes forget that these decisions that we make really do affect people's lives. Um, but it was also awesome to see so many county employees here. Um, really felt that we had the support of, um, of our people. And I do, I'm not sure I told them that that night, but I do appreciate uh, having the county here. Um, and then tomorrow evening from five to seven, the hospital is having an open house um, to, for their reopening of the birthplace. Um, for, so uh, food, uh, fun for your kiddos. So um, come on out, take a tour, uh, open to all, and that's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.